All right, we call the meeting to order. It is the September 23rd, 2019 Minneapolis City Planning Commission hearing. My name is Sam Rockwell, I serve as the President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Ellison, Brown, Sweetsie, Schrader, and Olson. Our first order of business today is to review the committee of the whole consent agenda. With our Vice President absent, I will go over that. So we approved the 2020 City Planning Commission calendar. We recommended approval of the Gateway Northeast Tax Increment Financing Plan. And we recommended approval consistent with the comprehensive plan of the land sale of 36, 37 Emerson Avenue North and 3315 Thomas Avenue North. I will take a motion to approve all of those items. Motion and a second? Motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Our next item of business is to approve the minutes from the August 19th, 2019 Minneapolis City Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, our next item of business is to organize the agenda for this City Planning Commission meeting. I will walk through the items on our agenda today. Please, if you're here, indicate if you wish to testify about a project, if you wish to testify against the project, or to amend staff's recommendation if you wish to testify in support, you can do so on the consent agenda. Item number one is 2015, 2019, 2113 Cedar Avenue South, 1820 and 1834 East, 22nd Street and Ward 6, a final plat. Is anyone here to speak on that item? Seeing none, we will place item number one on consent. Item number two will be continued to the October 21st City Planning Commission meeting. Item number three will also be continued to the October 21st, 2019 City Planning Commission meeting, hearing. Item number four is 2419, the Gateway Northeast, 2419, 2423 and 2435 Marshall Street Northeast, and 30, 34, 38, and 44 Lowery Avenue Northeast in Ward 3. Several motions there to approve the project. Anybody here to speak on item number four? Several to speak on item number four. We will discuss item number four. Item number five is Costco Gas, 3311 Broadway Street Northeast in Ward 1. We will discuss item number five. Item number six is 1621, 25th Street West in Ward 7, an application for nonconforming use. Anybody to speak on item number six? Seeing no one, we'll place item number six on consent. Item number seven, we will continue to the October 7th Planning Commission hearing. Is anybody here come to speak to item number seven? It will be continued to October 7th. All right, great. No one is here to speak to that. Item number eight, 2546 Johnson Street Northeast in Ward 1. A rezoning there. Is anybody here to speak on item number eight? One person for item number eight. Item number nine, 2912, 30th Avenue South in Ward 2, variance in site plan review. Is anyone here to speak on item number nine? We'll place item number nine on consent. Item number 10 is 2921, 29th Avenue South in Ward 2, variance in site plan. Anybody here to speak on item number 10? Seeing no one, we'll place item number 10 on consent. Item number 11 is 2829, 27th Avenue South, Ward 2. Anybody here to speak on that? Seeing none, we'll place item number 11 on consent. And item number 12 is 315 Nicollet Mall in Ward 3, a couple variances in site plan reviews. Anybody here to speak on item number 12? Item number 12? Yes. Item number 12, we'll discuss item number 12. Item number 13 is the Center for Performing Arts Expansion at 3754 Pleasant Avenue in Ward 8. Is anybody here to speak on item? We have several here to speak on item number 13. We'll discuss item number 13. Item number 14, 1200 Central Avenue Northeast in Ward 1. The Herbert will be continued to the October 21st, 2019 City Planning Commission meeting. Item number 15, North High School Field renovation, 1801 Fremont Avenue North in Ward 5. Is anybody here to speak on item number 15? Seeing none, we will place item number 15 on consent. All right, so our amended, how about, agenda as amended, is discuss items number 4, 5, 8, 12, and 13. We will continue items number 2, 3, and 14 to the 21st, and item number 7 to the 7th. And on consent will be items number 1, 6, 9, 10, 11, and 15. Commissioners, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right, next, could I have a motion to continue items number 2, 3, and 14 to October 21st, and item number 7 to October 7th?
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And could we have, I will open the agenda on the consent, open the public hearing on the consent agenda. Is anyone here to speak on the consent agenda? Seeing no one, I'll vote.
Mr. Chair? I'll just note that I'm recusing myself from item number one, as my spouse's employer had some involvement in that project.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Brown is recused from item number one. Anybody here to speak? No one, close the public hearing. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, moving on to our discussion items. First up is item number four, Gateway Northeast. Staff, it's Hillary.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is an application by Common Bond Communities for a development site located in the southeast quadrant of Lowery and Marshall in northeast Minneapolis. The applicant is proposing to construct a mixed-use building with 128 dwelling units and 9,600 square feet of ground-floor commercial space. There are several applications that are required for this development. Two of them are rezonings. The applicant has petitioned to rezone all of the properties within the development site to C2, which is what this property is currently zoned. The two properties on Marshall would need to be rezoned from the R2B to the C2. And then the four properties along Lowery would need to be rezoned, excuse me, from C1 to C2. And we are recommending approval of that. There is policy within the comprehensive plan that would support those recommendations. The land use guidance for the site is mixed-use and also urban neighborhood. Marshall and Lowery both neighborhood, excuse me, community quarters. And then the project site, or this parcel, excuse me, is also located in a neighborhood commercial node. And so for those reasons and others, as listed in the staff report, we are recommending approval of those rezonings. I just wanted to give you a site orientation. We did see this at a committee of the whole meeting over the summer, or maybe even last spring. I'm forgetting when. So Lowery is up here, and then Marshall is here. The ground-floor commercial is located towards the corner of the site, and is in yellow. And then you've got building services in green, and then the blue here on this eastern end of the development site. And then all of the stories above are residential dwelling units. There is ground parking here, access to an underground surface parking lot here. Currently, there is an alley, a public alley, that goes through the block. It goes north-south, and it currently exits out to Lowery. In conversations with Public Works, the alley is going to dogleg itself out to Grand Street. This is a situation where Public Works requested that the alley be wider than a typical alley to allow for two-way operations. And as part of the site plan review, that Public Works is involved in the preliminary development review, they will be conditioning that there be signage in this to direct those leaving this development to exit to Grand and then go to Lowery where there is a signal. We did not add any conditions of approval related to the alley on this, as this is a public alley, and Public Works has control over the right-of-way, not CPED. And so if something in the future were to change out at the site, or on the block, or in the neighborhood, we didn't want to have this development, or the applicant, come back to amend any conditions. So that is why you don't see conditions on here for the alley. However, it is part of the Public Works review, which is also in your packets. And then Public Works did respond to a letter from the Botino Neighborhood Association, and that was in your packets, that was received late after the materials had already gone out. So the other applications that are required for this development site, there's a conditional use permit to increase the height of the building from four stories or 56 feet up to five stories or 69 feet. The entire building is not 69 feet tall. That height is measured to the peak of this architectural feature at the corner of the site, which is located away from the nearest residential properties. The portions of the building that are closest to those residential properties, either on, excuse me, on Marshall or on Grand, step down to four stories in height. Given the overall height of the building, there is a variance to reduce the interior's sideyard setback. The portion of the building that is nearest to that interior property line is four stories, which would only require the 11 feet. But the overall height of the building dictates overall setback, so it is 13. So for those reasons, we're recommending approval of those. They do have a variance to increase the maximum floor ratio of the site, of the building, from 1.7 to 2.49. For the reasons listed in the staff report, going back to the comprehensive plan guidance, that we have to increase density in these characteristics, we are recommending approval of that. And then they do have site plan review, a preliminary and final plat, and then the vacation of the alley. We are recommending approval of all of those applications as well. They do need some alternative compliance via the site plan review application. The building placement, they have pulled the footprint of the building further from both Lowery and Marshall. Where the building is greater than the eight feet it is where the entrances to the buildings are. The building along Lowery also needed to be pulled back, as explained in the background section of your staff report. In the future, seven to 10 years, Hennepin County is going to reconstruct this part of Lowery, and they do need additional right-of-way. And so working through the development onboarding of this site, we met with Hennepin County, and the building is placed in a location that will allow for that reconstruction project to occur as it is dictated in their Hennepin County plans. There are some blank walls, and we are missing some windows on the ground floor of the building facing the onsite parking lot. Where there are blank walls, they do have green screens. We are making that a condition of approval. Where there are less windows in the residence, excuse me, the non-residential portion of the building, the residential portion of the building makes up for it. All of the upper levels have the required and exceed the minimum amount of windows. So we are recommending that you grant alternative compliance. They do also need to, alternative compliance measures for site plan review, and I apologize, I did not print the landscaping plan, I'm now noticing. But the landscaped yard here is less than seven feet, it is five, and they don't have a screen that's 95% opaque. Across the alley, there are garages, and in between the garages, there are six-foot-tall fences. So that screening would not be shielding the parking from any of those adjacent uses, because unless you're over six feet tall, you can't see it from those backyards. They do have landscaping in those areas. It's not that they don't have anything, they do have some, it's just not 95% opaque. And for traffic measures, it would be best to not have that tall screen when you have the cars coming out of the parking lot and then the adjacent driveway to that underground garage. So we are recommending that you grant alternative compliance for all of those, for those items in the development. And I will stand for any questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you, Hillary. We will, I will open the public hearing. If you're here to testify on this item, please come up, state your name and address for the record, and say whatever you came to say.
Can I just start? This is my first time doing this.
Yep, state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is.
Tell us what you want to tell us.
My name is Katie Barons. I live at 2416 Grand Street Northeast. My home was in the exact middle of that L that was just up there, so when you're saying the garage, that's mine. I'm also here on behalf of my neighbors on each side who neither could attend. We bought our house about five years ago. We moved into a neighborhood that is two and three stories tall, not five surrounded. That's not the house we bought. That's not the zoning. I do not object to building a building. We do object to the zoning that changes, not the River Liquor site, that's part of the commercial site, but the ones that put that five stories on both sides of ours. I spent four years putting in gardens and landscaping that it'll never see the sun again. I mean, it seems a little ridiculous for that size. I understand we're not talking about the alley, but the alley will wrap right around our house, and it seems like a terrible plan, because it's going to come in about 20 feet off a busy intersection blindly. The alley also coming straight out does break up that building. If we were talking about three-story buildings, I wouldn't be here objecting. So I really just want to note that those of us that live there, we did purchase our homes there, we did understand the zoning that was in place, and that was part of our decisions. These are the areas that we wanted to live in, and to be completely boxed out is just kind of ridiculous to me and really disturbing.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Ray Canapini. I also live at 2416 Grand Street. And just to echo what Katie mentioned, I think we're, in addition to that, the intersection of Marshall and Lowery is already a very congested one. And then having, you know, the amount of population that's going to, is proposed in that dense corner, and not have an easily flowed area around that, even given the sort of alley requirement, that the alley puts you right at a stoplight. So you really can't go out on the street onto Grand, so it doesn't allow for an easy flow of traffic. So, and then over the years, looking if the population is to grow, the congestion and the problem's only going to get worse. So I think we have to really look back at the initial proposal and where the alley is placed, and how it can alleviate, and take into consideration the growth of the general neighborhood and community, including that building, and to allow for a traffic congestion over, you know, over the next upcoming years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address for the record.
Andrew Hughes, 1080 Montreal Avenue South, St. Paul, Common Bond Communities. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I'd just like to say that we're excited to be moving forward this redevelopment. We're excited to offer mixed-income housing to this community, and commercial, neighborhoods oriented, commercial as well. It'd be 60% affordable, so adding much new and affordable housing to the area. And we agree and concur with staff's findings on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi there, Heidi Grasswall. I am, I just don't really understand why there are all these projects that get put forward where the zoning is different. This particular project has to get rezoned for two things, has two variances, and has one conditional use permit, and then they have to vacate the alley as well. So I'm not really sure why projects like this one can keep coming in front of you and in front of the city council, and keep getting approved with no regard for city, for what the zoning currently is. I do enjoy the fact that at least this project, unlike most of the other projects that are going on in northeast right now, does offer some affordable housing. But it's really not a good project for some of the people, the immediate neighbors. The project developers need to work better with those neighbors to mitigate their problems with this. If you're going to rezone, why don't you just rezone that River Liquor site itself? Make that building taller than the five stories, and then go out on the other side, two to three stories, like it's already zoned. Also, I do have a problem with the alley, because it's, the footprint of that building is really impeding the immediate neighbors. So I hope you take that in mind, along with what everyone else said. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, is there any discussion, or would somebody like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Brown.
I'll start off by moving approval of item A, items A and B, the rezonings.
We have a motion to approve items A and B, the rezonings. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Brown.
I think at this location, the rezonings are pretty straightforward. Both Lowery and Marshall are designated corridors in the comprehensive plan. Lowery and Marshall is a designated node as well. So commercial zoning, I think, is appropriate for all of these lots.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Ellison? Ellison?
Aye, sorry.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lefkier?
I'll abstain, because I missed public testimony on this item.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Six zero.
This motion carries. We have conditional use permit variances, site plan review. Does anybody have a motion or discussion? Commissioner Brown.
And I'll move along, I'll move approval of item C, D, and E, the conditional use permit for height and two variances.
We have a motion for approval of items C, D, and E. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Brown.
Just add, I know we heard from some of the neighbors on the building height and location of the building. I'll note that the proposed building location does meet the setbacks. I realize it is a little bit of a change there with reoriented, reorienting the alley. But overall, or I should say, on the south side lot, there's a variance of just two feet. Overall, the building bulk is about what you'd expect at this location along a commercial corridor.
Very good. Any further discussion? With that, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lefkier?
Also.
Sorry, I forgot. Got it. Abstained. Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Six zero.
We have site plan review, plats, and vacations. Commissioner Brown.
And I'll move approval of item F, the site plan review, with the 10 stated conditions, item G, the preliminary and final plat, and item H, the vacation.
We have a motion to approve items F, G, and H. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Kronzer.
Yeah, I would just like to note that I'm not going to be spurring the vacation approval. I think blocks and streets and alleys set good scale to the city, and when the city starts eroding that scale, we tend to see buildings that might not be at the right scale to the adjoining buildings. So I don't think those buildings look courageous, but I think keeping that alley where it is to help make scale buildings what they are is an important thing.
Very good. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye with no N-H.
Okay, got it. Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Six zero.
That motion carries, and that ends our hearing on item number four. Moving on to item number five, 3311 Broadway Street, the Costco gas project.
Again, this request is located at 3311 Broadway Street Northeast. The applicant is seeking to establish a new accessory automobile convenience facility. This request requires two applications. One, a conditional use permit to allow an automobile convenience facility in the I-1 district. And two, site plan review for establishing a new automobile-related use. The subject property is just over 12 acres in size, and contains a building that is just around 155,000 square feet. The parcel is bound by 35 to the north, Broadway to the south, and Hoover Street to the west. Costco converted the existing structure into a business center. This use is similar to your standard Costco, but is more oriented towards businesses and restaurant customers. It features more bulk goods, lacking a bakery and other elements typically found in Costco. Under this model, the zoning administrator classified the use as wholesaling, warehousing, and distribution. It permitted use in I-1. The applicant is seeking to put an automobile convenience facility, gas pumps, in the southwest corner of the site. They are proposing to utilize the existing curb cuts, so there will be no new impacts to either Broadway or Hoover Street. Staff is able to make all necessary findings for the CUP, as well as site plan review, recommends approval. All be here for questions. The applicant is also present.
Commissioners, are there questions for staff? Commissioner Kronzer.
Yeah, Andrew, there's a note in the alternative compliance that staff is not supporting the request to not plant a certain number of canopy trees. I'm just wondering, do you think we should have a condition of approval in the site plan to require those canopy trees?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Very good, thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing, ask the applicant to speak first.
Hi, Steve Zabrowski from Lambform Professional Services, representing Costco Wholesale on this project. Just wanted to mention a couple of things regarding the staff report, specifically discussing the landscaping on the project. We completed this initial, we call it redevelopment of this site, just over two years ago. And at that time, a landscape plan was presented, approved, and constructed in accordance with the approvals at the time. Those landscaping requirements included approximately 183 total trees on the project, all of which have been constructed onsite, which is in excess of what is being required of this project as an aggregate today. I think the discrepancy that we're looking at now is perhaps the canopy tree versus some of the other trees that were included as part of the landscape plan, which included some ornamental trees and a large number of coniferous or evergreen trees, which were already on the property. We did add a few more to the project as well. But what I would propose is, if we're not going to allow the ornamental trees to count towards a canopy tree, we would be willing to replace the balance of the required to what we currently have onsite, so long as the existing evergreen trees are allowed to count towards that requirement. They do present value to the project, and we would hate to see those have to go to make room for a different type of tree. We just don't think we have the room to accommodate that. So we'd like to have that be considered as part of this proposal. In addition to that, you know, I see under the staff recommendations and the conditions of approval that they are requesting 95% opacity at three feet high along Broadway and Hoover. Again, we're not impacting the majority of the project, or majority of the site. Again, we're not impacting the majority of the project, or majority of the site with this proposal. If the request is maybe geared a little bit more specific toward this current proposal, that might be something that we could work with. So I would propose that maybe that recommendation be amended to only specifically address the locations in proximity to our proposed development, which is the gas station only. And then the third one would be the screening for the transformer. I assume that that is in discussion for the proposed facilities with the gas station. That I don't know, because the other transformer is tucked into the site and not able to be screened. It's set back quite a bit from Hoover Street and not visible, so I guess I'm not sure what that other recommendation or condition of approval would be, so maybe Andrew could clarify that one, and that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, public hearing. For everybody else, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
You, President Rockwell, members of the planning commission. My name is Jacob Steen with Larkin Hoffman Attorneys, 8300 Norman Center Drive in Bloomington. I'm here tonight on behalf of Lambert Properties LLC, and I've submitted a letter, so you should have a copy of that letter. And I detail in that letter, in far more detail than I will right now, our concerns. But we do strongly oppose this CUP for a couple of reasons. First of all, simply, this application should be denied because the existing use is actively in violation of the zoning ordinance and has never obtained the necessary approvals to be here. Per the 2016 zoning administrator determination, this use, as staff indicated, is a wholesaling, warehousing, and distribution use. Now, that is a very different classification than your standard Sam's Club or Costco use. Sam's Club or Costco are traditionally classified as general retail sales and service, which is, of course, prohibited in the I-1 District. And in fact, in 2004, on this very same property, in this very same zoning, the city denied a Sam's Club warehousing club retail center because it was a general retail sales and service. Now, fortunately for Costco, under the situation, wholesaling, warehousing, and distribution is allowed in the I-1 District. It is allowed, subject to a maximum gross floor area of 30,000 square feet. This use has not obtained a conditional use permit to exceed 30,000 square feet and converted what was then an approximately 175,000 square foot building to what it sounds like is now 155,000 square foot building. So because the existing use has never lawfully obtained that conditional use permit, for whatever reason, approving this application would be an expansion of an otherwise unlawful use. Now, further, the addition of this use constitutes a change in the character of that original use. Because it didn't fit squarely into the box, the zoning administrator's determination said that if the character of this 2016 described use changes, it may constitute a wholesale change of the land use itself. And I think that's exactly what we have here. If you ask yourself, every Costco I've ever seen has a large gas station out front, but it didn't come through in the beginning because they wanted to frame this as some other use, a business use. Well, the truth is, this is, you can meet all of your grocery shopping needs here, but it also serves the B-to-B community. So the addition of the gas station pumps, the accessory gas station, will make this no different than your Eden Prairie Costco. And Costco's model, as you probably know, is to attract their members with cheap gas to get them inside the store. So exactly as was foretold in the zoning administrator's determination, and I've included an excerpt in our letter, when this use changes in character, it has the impact of potentially changing that use, and I believe that's exactly what we have here. By doing that, you create what is, again, a general retail sales and service use, what they were trying to avoid in the first place, which is why they didn't add the gas. Now, what you need to do, or what I would ask you to do, is deny this application and ask them to come forward with a rezoning application to get to a district that would allow that general retail sales and services use. Now, I also want to touch briefly on the importance of the industrial employment district. And I have been in front of this body and in front of the city council, and I've heard on several occasions the importance of this area in particular and the industrial employment district and the policies in that district. And that district serves to create and preserve high-density industrial jobs. And as the application states, this will create exactly one attendant job on one and a half acres, approximately one and a half acres of industrial land. Now, that is far below the density is called for in the industrial employment district. So my clients operate, frankly, they operate a gas station. So this isn't about fighting gas station. I think the truth is, this is a potentially existential threat, but what it's really about is allowing multinational corporation, a billion-dollar out-of-state corporation, to play by different rules. My clients have gone through the planning commission and the board of adjustment no less than five times for various licenses and approvals, including a traffic study to demonstrate how their gas station would impact the surrounding area. So what we're asking is simply that the city holds this applicant accountable and brings them through the necessary process. So with that, I would ask that you either deny the application outright or continue this application and direct the applicant to come back with an application that does comply with the city code. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Please state your name and address for the record.
Clay Lambert, 2700 University Avenue. Mr. President and Commissioners, I'm the gentleman that kind of brought this about. I'm an avid proponent of Costco. I shop there three times a day at this particular unit. The place, what I'm going to talk about is the traffic. The traffic there is already horrible. I'm backed up all the way to 280 because the intersection at Universe or Industrial and Broadway is, was designed wrong, just flat-out wrong. So we're all backed up to that thing. The curb cuts in this general property here, too, are, one, the one on Broadway is so tiny, I go in the lawn every time I go. This one on the other side there, the way the traffic's going to flow through there and then come through the parking lots, it's not going to work. I'm a gas station guy. I've been doing it for 15 years. I know what I'm doing. They do, too, and I'm sure this gentleman here probably does, too, but I don't know how that passed. That's 90,000 gallons of fuel in the ground right there. I have 22,000 on my property. That's a lot of traffic, and that's what was not stated in the application. That's how much traffic is going to be in that area. There's a huge holiday three blocks away. No one was asking for a gas station. So all I'm asking again is, this should be denied. I had to do all this stuff, and it doesn't seem like Costco has to, and that's not fair. I've been in the city forever. I live here. They don't. And the, they can get by without the gas, period. I've been told I can get by without selling methanol cigarettes, and I'm barely surviving, but I'm still surviving. They need to deny the gas station. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to testify? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Devon. I live at 2701 Fourth Street Southeast, and I'm just far away from this development, but it doesn't matter. I'm here just to ask you guys to deny this project because we just had, like, an international climate march on Friday, and this would obviously increase our carbon emissions because Costco gas would probably be cheap, people would be driving more, and all that stuff. And I know the 2040 plan doesn't come into effect until November 1st, but in that plan, there's like no new gas stations within that plan, but, but yeah, but yeah, if you guys could just deny this gas station to not make our planet warmer than it already is, that would be great.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to testify? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, are there any questions or a motion? Commissioner Lefkier?
I have a question for staff. Andrew, just some clarification on the canopy trees. Were you saying that those were in addition to the existing trees on the site or in lieu of a certain number of ornamental trees that are already on site? Because it seems to be a misunderstanding of some sort.
Yeah, I mean, we're not counting ornamental trees towards that canopy tree requirement, so if they wanted to replace those canopy tree, or ornamental trees with canopy trees, if they wanted to add canopy trees between the existing pine trees, ultimately, we're looking for canopy trees to provide shade.
Okay, so if they ended up tearing out the same number of ornamental trees and installing canopy trees, that's the intent? It wasn't intended to have additional canopy trees?
We're taking a look at the entire site, not just around the gas station.
Right.
This property went through, when Costco was establishing this use here, it went through a modified preliminary development review. We took a general look at the site. There's some leeway in providing trees, canopy trees, et cetera. For this application, we are doing a full site plan review. There are canopy trees required, and we're going to hold them to those requirements.
Okay, so I just wanted to be clear on that. And then, secondly, in regard to the screening of the transformer that he mentioned, that's in regard to any new transformer or the existing transformer from the existing Costco?
All transformers would need to be screened.
Okay. And then, lastly, he had a question about the 95% opacity along Broadway and Hoover. I assume that is for the entirety of the site, since it's for the site plan review and for the entire development?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schrader?
Just want to follow up on the canopy trees versus ornamental trees. So am I understanding right, were they told to plant canopy trees and did ornamental trees? Or were they given the option, they took that one option, and now we're saying they need to do canopy trees?
I'm not sure. I would guess that they had some existing pine trees and proposed new, and they were generally approved as a modified P E R, rather than the full site plan review.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions of staff?
Two quick ones for you. One, did you consider, discuss the sort of the use consistency issue that was with the zoning, or with, yeah, with the zoning?
Yeah. Costco, I think this originated from a zoning letter. Zoning prepared a letter that said wholesaling, warehousing, and distribution is a permitted use in the I-1. Went from there. We saw the P E R, Modified Preliminary Development Review, come in. We did look at that 30,000 square foot max. That was brought up to management. After looking into that, they determined that was not needed. If that had been needed on that review, that would have stopped. They would have applied for a CUP. They'd be in front of the same board.
Very good. Thanks.
If I could just add to that. So the zoning administrator's determination that came out in 2016 classified the use as wholesaling and distribution and did not classify it as warehousing. With that, there is no maximum square footage for a wholesaling use, so a wholesale use is not limited to 30,000 square feet.
Very good. And then, my second question, just based off of the last testifier, did staff consider the sort of broader environmental impacts under the conditional use permit, finding one on health, safety, general welfare?
Yes. In part, I mean, we're looking at the trees from the cooling standpoint. Additional canopy trees allow less sun to get to that parking lot, create that warming, so yes, that was evaluated as a part of this application.
But beyond the site plan, so those are all sort of site plan issues, beyond the site plan, too, the conditional use permit for the use as an automobile convenience center?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for staff? Commissioner Lefkier?
I was just wondering if any conversations had taken place between you and the applicant in regard to some of their concerns about the site plan review requirements. I know it sounds really like a bit of a conundrum, but in the past, when we've seen gas stations come through, in the recent past, some of them have proposed e-vehicle chargers as an alternative means of achieving certain things, such as the canopy trees, it's part of an environmental goal. Has that conversation ever taken place, just as a more progressive step toward what we could do to accomplish this?
There is no conversation around that.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions for staff? Thank you. Any further discussion or would somebody like to start us off with a motion? We have two applications before us, CUP and site plan review. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll move approval of Items A and B, the conditional use permit and site plan review. Item A has one stated condition, Item B has six stated conditions.
All right, we have a motion for approval of Items A and B with all stated conditions. We have a second, and Commissioner Kronzer?
Yes, I'd like to add a seventh condition to the site plan review, that the applicant shall meet the required canopy tree count.
Let's take that as a, let's do a quick voice vote on that. So the proposed seventh condition on site plan review is that the applicant shall meet the required canopy tree count. Do we have a second on that amendment?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we add a seventh condition. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lefkier?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Seven zero.
All right, with that, we have wrapped up Item Number Five. We'll move on to Item Number Eight, 2546 Johnson Street Northeast. Staff, it is Peter.
The application before you, as just stated, is located at 2546 Johnson Street Northeast. The application is to rezone the property from the R2B Residence District to the OR1 Office Residence District. No major modifications are proposed to the exterior of the structure. The applicant is seeking to establish an office at the premises primarily used for the purposes of a therapist's office or a shared therapist's office for multiple practitioners. The property is located on an adopted community corridor in the Ward One area of Northeast. In general, community corridors support mix of uses and densities, and the office residence district is established to allow for a mix of uses of varying scales, but in general, office uses within a residential context, and then also some limited small-scale retail and neighborhood-serving uses. It should be noted that those neighborhood-serving retail uses are only allowed in mixed-use buildings, so this building would not qualify for the establishment of those types of uses. That's a basic summary of the application. I can take any questions. I know the applicant's here to speak as well.
Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward, please. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Bev Koopman. My husband, Darrell, is here also with the applicants. I live at 132 Alderwood Avenue in Buffalo, and I've also been staying at this house now for a couple months. It's lovely neighborhood, lovely house. We sold a property, I've been a landlord for 30 years, and we had a property in St. Paul that we sold this spring and wanted to reinvest the money. We'd been renting that to our daughter and her husband while he was going to veterinary school. When we sold it, we started looking for another property for my other daughter, who is a marriage therapist. She currently practices in the Wake Park neighborhood out of her home. She's, at the moment, eight She's, at the moment, eight months pregnant, which is why she's not here right now, and she has a two-year-old at home. So the situation of practicing as a therapist with a growing family is less than ideal. So we had hoped to be able to help her out with establishing her career. We started out by looking for commercial properties, and those are precious few in the price range that we're looking, that we were looking at. We looked for OR1 properties. Those are also precious few, and so we, you know, you keep expanding your vision. And so then, we moved on to looking for a property that was in a mixed-use corridor so that we could look for rezoning it, or if we really have to, to convert to a duplex, which is not what we would prefer to do. We found this lovely home. It's a Craftsman bungalow built in 1916. It's been well-tended and loved, and with my daughter present and the other therapists that will be there, it will continue to be a home that is taken care of in ways that we all know that a rental property often is not. So that's, our request is to move to OR, from R2B to OR1. Do you have, any questions?
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to testify, please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Hitting, and I'm here with my husband, Mark Hitting. We live at 2534 Johnson Street Northeast. We're about three houses down from this home. We've lived in this house for 37 years, so I've seen a lot of changes in the neighborhood. We live on Johnson Street, which has gotten extremely busy over the years since the addition of the quarry, which is on 35W, enters onto Johnson Street there. There is many neighbors on both sides of the street that are families, they've been living there many years, and parking has become difficult due to some rentals that have come in, which Bev has said that it would be a rental if they aren't able to rezone this. But per my, I was looking at the website for her current property, where they are doing therapy from, and I did read that it could be for groups as well. So my concern is how many parking spots on this street that is right on a very busy corner of Johnson and Lowry that will be taken up by individuals coming to this home. And as she said, it's a very well-cared-for home, and I definitely agree. The neighborhood, all our older homes, neighbors, it's just a very nice area. But we do have some rentals on this property, on this area as well. Teen Challenge is on the Lincoln side, which has taken up, let's see, I would say quite a few of our lots. Actually, it would be taking up nine lots. That used to be a board and care home, which is the same as what an assisted living is now, which was very quaint and nice years ago. And now, we have quite a few individuals at that facility, so there's lots of alley traffic. We have alley traffic also as, because Johnson and Lowry has gotten so busy, they want to bypass that corner so they come down our alley. We do have children on that alley, and I would assume if they're coming to a home for therapy per se, and there is not parking there, they're going to be coming down the alley as well. So I would like to propose, as she was saying that, this is for more than one office. It could vary with how many people are coming to that home, that this would not go through for the good of our neighbors, and there are some small children in our block area as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have one application before us. Is there any discussion or would somebody like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Brown?
Yes, I have a question for staff. I'm just curious if there have been any conversations with the construction code staff about what sort of interior modifications might be required for this structure to be reoccupied with a commercial occupancy. It looks like based on the floor plan. It's pretty minor modifications. I don't know if you can elaborate on that at all, Peter?
I don't have that information in front of me. I know for certain types of commercial occupancy, certain upgrades would be required, like ADA and/or fire safety. I don't know that for the scale of office use, those kinds of modifications are typically required, but when the applicant comes through for a business license, they would be subject to that kind of review.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Thanks. Any further discussion or motion? One application, a rezoning before us.
I will make a motion to approve the rezoning.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Swayze.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm having a hard time with this, with this application for a few reasons. Not because I don't see the goal, or I'm sure it would be a good business, and I'm sure the family, you know, who wants this, and the therapist would be good for the people. I'm struggling with a few things. The first is that the rezoning is forever, and while this might seem like a good use right now for this house, if the house is sold in a year or two, it will always have this designation. And I, I think we have to look a little bit further beyond the exact thing that's in front of us and think about that with something as big as a rezoning of a house in the middle of a block. And looking at the, at the analysis in the staff report, many things cut both ways here. And, for example, it says, yes, it's a community corridor, and the intermittent commercial uses are clustered at intersections. This is in the middle of the block. Couple other things that give me pause with this, whether the amendment is in the public interest and is not solely for the interest of a single, single property owner. I can't see that this is in the broader public interest and not in the interest of a single property owner. They're looking for a place to put a business for them now. It's not the kind of business that everybody on the block necessarily wants or needs or will use. It doesn't appear to be the kind of office or commercial use that is lacking in this neighborhood, so it's not bringing something to the neighborhood that's, that people can't, or at least it's, nobody is saying that, that there's a need that would be met by You know, this is a, a single-family house in the middle of a block, and I, I think also, I don't have any reason to believe an absentee landlord would come in and take this over if they rent it or if they sell it. But it is true that you do lose the eyes on the street and the 24-hour thing, and somebody bringing their groceries home at 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night, and that's, that's what's, you know, what's been on this street, and to plop this right in the middle of the block, I just can't make the leap to that it's not just in the interest of one property owner. So I won't be able to support the motion. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lipke-Pier?
No.
Wilson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
No.
Five to two?
Motion carries. Next item on our list is item number 12, 315 Nicollet Mall, in Ward 3.
Thank you, Commissioners. Our next project is located at 315 Nicollet Mall. This is currently a vacant site, and the proposal is to construct a new 21-story mixed-use project with 369 dwelling units and approximately 5,600 square feet of retail space. It's a large, new project, so I won't go too far into the details, except to perhaps answer questions of the commission and/or the public, but I will say that the application is seeking two variances to the Nicollet Mall overlay district standards. One of those is to allow the building to be located more than eight feet from the property line. And I'll just go over that here. So along Nicollet Mall, the Nicollet Mall overlay district was established for a couple of reasons. One, to support active retail uses along the corridor. That's where that spacing requirement comes in. That's a requirement or a standard that also exists in our site plan review standards, but in this case, there's a slightly higher standard for meeting that in that it requires a variance to go farther away from the property line. The applicant is proposing or seeking to establish a restaurant use along the Nicollet Mall here, which, as we are all aware, is a common use along Nicollet Mall these days. They are proposing that the principal entrance to that commercial use be located within eight feet of the property line, but then the building wall steps back as you move south along the Nicollet Mall elevation to accommodate a sidewalk café. At this part of the mall, as we are familiar with the street design, the actual right-of-way, the vehicle right-of-way curves slightly as it moves along the street, and we are at one of the inward curves of the right-of-way, so that slightly constrains the available public right-of-way space for public activation and landscaping furnishing. And so the applicant is seeking that variance in order to accommodate that outdoor restaurant seating area. The other variance is to the Nicollet Mall overlay district standards that call for at least 60% of the gross floor area within the overlay to be retail space. The applicant is not meeting that standard. I believe it's 28% in terms of the amount that they are currently meeting within the actual overlay space. They do meet the standard along, that the commercial space, they meet the linear footage requirement along the Nicollet Mall overlay district, or along the Nicollet Mall elevation, but not the gross floor area. And then, obviously, the next application is site plan review. We are suggesting a few conditions of approval. The main one having to do with the building design is regarding the entrance to the auto court, which is located on the Third Street elevation. See if I can call up an image here. So there's one principal entrance to the shared vehicle parking along Third Street. There's also a turnaround space and auto court for vehicle drop-offs in that location. The curb cut is narrowed somewhat to minimize conflicts with pedestrian traffic, but there is a large opening that exposes the public realm to that internal vehicle circulation space. Staff is requesting that the applicant look at some ways of increasing the screening between the public right-of-way and that internal auto court, such that it doesn't have as impactful of a visual and audio presence on the public realm potentially. And so that would be explored through conversations with staff after approval, if the commission sees fit. So I'll not get too far into the design. I know the applicant's here, and we can maybe just answer questions related to the concern of those present.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing and ask the applicant to step forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, President Rockwell. Commissioners, Nick Vernon with the Opus Group, 4047 Sunnyside Road. I will start, and I'm also going to have Bob Wilken with ESG say a few words about the specific changes since our committee of the whole meeting. We're very excited to be proposing the last development site of a surface lot on the north end of Nicollet Mall and continuing to see that transformation. Since we last met, we did receive a letter of support from the Downtown Minneapolis Neighborhood Association, and we addressed a handful of changes based on some of that feedback that we received at Cow. If there are any questions from me, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll let Bob run through a handful of those changes since that meeting.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, President Rockwell and Commissioners. My aide here is...
I'm Gretchen from ESG, 500 South Washington Avenue.
We brought some graphic exhibits just to briefly highlight some of the changes that we made since the, since the design that we presented to you at Committee of the Whole, in case you have any concerns or want to talk about those changes.
All of them? I have to open that one?
Yep.
Okay, that's it?
Just that top one.
You have to do yours.
Yep, thanks. So this first exhibit, so at the top, there's five pages here. I'll go through those pretty quickly. At the top is the image from Committee of the Whole. At the bottom is the image from the land use application. Several of the Commissioners took issue with the, the design of the setback portion of the tower. Some Commissioners thought that maybe it was not reading strong enough, or maybe it was reading a little confused. Commissioner Lipke-Pier noted that the, she thought that the elevation facing Marquette was fairly successful and challenged us to take that language into the rest of the tower, which, which you can see we've done. I can show it a little bit better on, on another image. This is the view of the Nicollet Mall frontage. I think Commissioner Cronzer challenged us to give this elevation a little more love. I think that was a direct quote. So we did take a little closer look at that and added a little more articulation along the glazing of the podium portion, and we also addressed a little bit in more detail how that outdoor area might be landscaped for, for seating. And this is a view from Third and Marquette. There were a couple of comments on these images. There was a lot of discussion about the Marquette elevation, and particularly the elevation that screens the above-grade parking. I think one of the suggestions from Commissioner Cronzer was to make that glazing pattern in front of the parking, more closely resemble the glazing pattern in the rest of the dark brick podium. And there were a couple of other changes that we've made to make that podium language a little more cohesive from all sides. The other one you can see here is that in, in the Cow application, we had a slightly different color of material along those walk-up townhomes at the front. The commission challenged us to simplify that palette, and so we brought the dark brick down. And I think, I think, you know, we discussed a little bit with Peter as he was creating his staff report, and we talked a little bit about how this elevation might, might evolve. We did add a little bit more detail, think a little bit more about how the interior of that space might be landscaped, but we are totally amenable to, to staff's recommendations that, and I guess we can use this exhibit to talk a little bit more specifically about staff's concerns, but... It's primarily the fact that there's this wide aperture that, that really, along the public realm, maybe saps a little bit of the life away. You're looking for a little bit more building wall, I think, and a little bit more just separation from that automotive use. And we are totally open to creative ways of addressing that, and I think even though this is a land use application, we're always trying to develop the design and make it better, and we're happy to work with staff on that. the design and make it better, and we're happy to work with staff on that. And if there are any questions about any of the specific applications, I'm happy to address any of those now or perhaps later, once we find out more about some concerns public might have.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to testify, please come to the mic and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Virginia May. I live at, excuse me, 121 Washington. I overlook this. First of all, I have to make sure that I know what I'm talking about. Is this going to be built on the other half a block where there's already a high-rise on half the block? And so how are the people? My question is, there's a tower here and a tower here. Is there a space between them or what?
Why don't we ask a series of questions, and then we'll have the applicant come back up?
Okay.
Just so that no dialogue...
Should I just wait for that or continue? Okay. Okay, so I just was curious about that because the people who are in there, are they going to be looking out like across this at another building? But my major concern with the variances that are granted about retail and setbacks and et cetera is I've seen this happen in building after building along the Marquette especially and the mall. This building's going to be located right across from the library and Nimbus and that whole commotion. And as those of us who go to volunteer in the library, as I do and live where I do, that's caused a major problem through, I don't know if it's lack of planning or whatever, but now I'm seeing they're going to have a sidewalk café overlooking that, which if that happens, that's good. But right now, when you walk along Marquette, anytime after 8:30 at night, you are in a sea of concrete for at least several blocks. There is no retail. The last hearing I came to hear, they wanted a bike valet for their clients to be counted as retail. Well, you know, so, you know, there's a, so when they published the mugging and crime report, the area that they talked about was between Third, Sixth, Second Avenue, and Hennepin. And I think when you walk along those streets, anytime from 8:30 on, it's dark, it's all cement. A variance was granted for them to have parking in those other condo buildings or apartment buildings. And I just feel like this pattern is developing, that people have their living space on patios that are way up off the mall, and it doesn't increase the business or the walkability or the pedestrian count. I realize retail's a terrible problem. People, there aren't tenants for the places there are, but I think then they should be subsidized or something should happen because basically the mall, except for restaurants and except during athletic events after 5:30 at night and most weekends, is a scary place. And I've lived here since 2000, and I've seen some bad changes. And I feel like giving variances for landscaping, for retail, and other things is a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do the applicant want to respond on the questions?
Bob and I will try to answer the first question about just distance between 365 Nicollet and the new building.
Yeah, the distance is, I can't remember, it's either 100 feet or 120 feet.
107, yeah, I think so. You're right in the middle.
Okay, which is about the same width of the right-of-way of Washington Avenue. So it's essentially as if there's a street in between, so quite a bit...
So just to answer your question, here's the existing 365 building. There's 107 feet, and then the new building facing Third.
And what's going to be between that?
I'll go to that plan down here.
Yeah, so for the first, yeah, so for the first, basically between those two buildings, both buildings are designed as a podium with a tower above, so there's like a six-story larger portion of the building. Between those buildings for the first six stories is a fairly narrow service alley. But above that, levels seven through 20, the towers are separated by about 100 feet.
Oh, I see.
I'd ask that further questions just be directed to staff or the applicant after, just after our order is done here. Thank you.
Maybe we want to just talk about what's facing Marquette?
That'd be great, thanks.
Sure. I'm going to try to find a better plan here.
So facing Marquette, there are, for about 40% of the elevation on the street level, there are residential units, private residential units. And for the southern 60% is, we're proposing a residential amenity that consists of what we're calling sport courts, so racquetball, basketball, and those have, those are fully glazed. And we've oriented those uses so that pedestrians can see into those uses. Granted, they're not open to the public, but I think they will provide some visual interest and maybe even entertainment.
So just to point that on the plan here, there's a residency unit here that turns the corner, ma'am. Turns the corner and goes down Marquette, and then you have an entrance to the, exit to the building there. And then here is the sport court areas where these will be glazed. You'll see the activity within here as people are either in the, I think this is a half-court and then kind of a racquetball courts there.
A couple of racquetball courts, yeah.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, are there further questions? Anybody else here to testify? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, discussion, motions? Commissioner Kronzer.
Make a motion to approve staff recommendation for items A and B, the two variances.
Motion to approve items A and B. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Kronzer.
Just quickly on the variant setback from the distance off the Nicollet Mall property. The north end of Nicollet Mall has a slightly different character than the south end of the mall for sure and parts of the middle part of the mall. So I think this is in keeping with the character of the mall at this point downtown.
Further comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupke-Pier?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Seven Zero?
Motion carries. We have one remaining item, site plan review. Commissioner Kronzer.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan review with the six stated conditions.
We have a motion to approve site plan review. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Kronzer.
And just to that sixth condition, I would encourage you to look at also the height of that canopy over the auto court. Maybe that doesn't matter, but I think that might be in the mix of trying to reduce the impact of the opening to the auto court. Just a couple of other quick comments. Yes, I think the building has more love, so I thank you for making those improvements. And thank you for not trying to design a po'co'share on this project. I think the auto court is the future. If there needs to be auto access, I think that's a much more pedestrian-friendly building, better use of land way of providing auto service to properties, especially downtown. So thank you for that.
Commissioners, any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupke-Pier?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Seven Zero?
That concludes our business with item number 12. Item number 13 is the Center for Performing Arts Expansion. Staff is Aaron Hannover.
Good afternoon, President Rockwell and Commissioners. The Center for Performing Arts Expansion is, there, as you saw in the report, the Center for Performing Arts is currently there, and their practice is to help teach and help provide a practice space for multidisciplinary arts. The proposal is a five-story addition on the west side, that the goals of the project are to provide accessibility for the existing building that's there, as well as provide more art studio space. And you saw the applications in front of you, a conditional use permit, five variances, and site plan review, which staff is supportive of those applications. There is a number of public comments that came in, and a lot of the concern was traffic and parking in the area. Just want to go through why staff is supportive of that briefly. First, unique circumstances for the site. Staff finds that one of the main things is the existence of the 1923 convent building that's here, which is considered a historic resource and was looked at as possibly being part of a historic district at all the four corners of this intersection. Staff, and in informal conversations with the Heritage Preservation Commission, were looking for the applicant to do a building that had a light touch with the existing building to give that neighboring, the original building, breathing room and not impact the architectural integrity. And we feel that the applicant has done that. With that, when you move the building to the west, it's going to limit the amount of space that you have for other aspects, such as parking. The applicant, even with that said, the applicant has not forgotten about parking wholesale. They've, they are proposing to really encourage the use of alternative modes of transportation by providing bike parking, by promoting the amount of the transit spaces in the area, and also coordinating with the surface parking lots that are in the area. And that too is one of the elements of the parking standards, is not to have parking that's proposed be a detriment from a negative aesthetics and use of an area, to not have parking overtake a site and the area. So in addition to that, I do want to recognize what the applicant has done in placing the building as far south as possible, and the lower residential area to the north, they're placing the building 20 feet away from that north property line and keeping it away from the alley as much as possible. So staff does recognize that 38th Street is a relatively busy street. It's a community corridor, and there's a lot of activities in the area. It's a great place to be with the 38th and Grand commercial node and the activities that are taking place at 38th and Pleasant. But in talking with the applicant, their main time of the users coming to the building are weeknights and Saturdays and later in the day and Sundays. So that pairs well with the other uses, and their intent to, and their intent to use the surface parking lots in the area. So we feel that the applicant has thought through the application and the variance requests in front of you, and for that, staff is supportive of the project and the applications.
Thank you, Aaron. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward first. Please state your name and address for the record, and if you'd like to add anything to what Aaron said, go for it.
My name is Jackie Hayes. I'm the owner of the Center for Performing Arts and at 3754 Pleasant Avenue. Just thank you for this process. I'm a longstanding business owner at that intersection and actually have lived for 15 years at the corner of 38th and Pleasant in the top floor of the Center for Performing Arts. So I feel like the approach to this project is informed by time spent, relationships developed, and a sense of what and where the community might want to grow. We've engaged in a number of processes with neighbors via the Neighborhood Association and our own initiatives to invite as much input as we could in the development of the project, in addition to the artist community, who obviously makes essential to the process. So in addition to a kind of process that invited ongoing input, which has informed where we are today in terms of design, sustainability is a very important, both, actually, both economic and environmental sustainability is a big part of this project. And not only does the majority of our folks who are tenants come from the neighborhood, and a number of them are, you know, are already biking, et cetera, so we're happy to extend what we offer in terms of avenues for biking to our facility. But we also, big chunks of what we do are not even car-intensive. So for example, we have an Airbnb, none of those people have cars. They're all lifting and et cetera. So we've done quite a bit of analysis on, you know, how we might decrease any impact on the intersection. We very carefully weaved the activity that we would invite in these spaces around the uses. We have two big parking lots across both streets that are empty evenings and weekends, except for church on Sunday, so whatever that is, Sunday mornings. So we have relationships with those two institutions to use the pavement instead of creating additional pavement. So I think based on the feedback that I'm hearing around parking, I just want to introduce the fact that we are sensitive to it and feel that we've done a project that really addresses our expansion and what it might do to the intersection. So anything else, any questions?
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you.
Okay, great, sure.
Anybody else who wishes to testify, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jean Riderson. I'm a resident on Pleasant Avenue. My address is 3644 Pleasant. So in the matter of this, first of all, I want to say I've not heard about it. I first heard about this, I actually live two blocks away. I first heard about this last night at 10:00 PM through the neighborhood webs, there's a neighborhood organization, and I was really distressed. So I'm a longtime resident of the Kingfield neighborhood. I own my house at 3644 Pleasant and am therefore a resident of the neighborhood adjacent to and would be impacted by the proposed commercial expansion of the Center for Performing Arts located at 38th and Pleasant. I learned about this hearing last night at 10:00 PM. A notice of this hearing and the proposed CPA expansion was not included in the most recent Kingfield neighborhood newsletter. I also recently got a letter about the Grand Avenue expansion. I received no letter about this particular expansion. This hearing fell within working hours, and thus for me and others to attend required us to leave work. I request that you schedule and adequately announce another public hearing on this matter, given that you are offering to waive zoning requirements, thus denying residents of the benefits of zoning protections. Surrounding the CPA is a residential neighborhood that's been impacted by the growth of four large institutions, including Lake County School, CPA, the Catholic Church, and the Charter School. Historically, these buildings served the community in their immediate vicinity within walking distance. None of these buildings meet current zoning requirements for off-street parking. Now these buildings serve a broader community, as evidenced by the parking pressure currently experienced by the residents along Pleasant Avenue between 36th and 38th. Not only do we have four large institutions at the intersection where CPA is located, a third restaurant opened at the adjacent intersection, and a fourth is due to open soon, both without off-street parking. Have you taken the time to do a traffic assessment in this area and observe how people travel to and from these institutions? I assure you, there are no current shortages of bicycle parking because people don't rely on bicycles to come and go to these buildings, nor do they stand at nearby parking at bus stops. They arrive and leave by car, yes, mostly in the evening. I see them as I'm walking in the neighborhood. I would like to also add that it isn't true that the other places don't do evening and weekends. The Lake Country School has frequent evening... The Lake Country School has frequent evening events for their children and parents, which completely clog up and remove any accessible parking in the neighborhood. The church has events at least every Wednesday night, and sometimes they have weddings and other events as well. So, in the current state, during the events, parking for homeowners is overrun by event attendees. Otherwise, parking is generally adequate until poor snow removal makes alleys inaccessible. When single-side parking is invoked, parking for residents is taken by residents on Grand Avenue, and thus enough parking does not exist. Do you know the current student and faculty head count, that is vehicle population associated with Lake County, or the Charter School, the church, or CPA? I think it would be important to know what those populations are. In the future state, without the CPA expansion, but with another restaurant and the organic growth of all four institutions to their capacity, I can guess that the available street parking will be inadequate. I estimate that the three blocks of Pleasant that bear the impact of this commercial expansion have a total of 168 parking spaces during fair weather. How many more parking spaces will be needed when these four institutions approach their current capacity? To suggest that bicycles and transit can mitigate the impact of CPA's expansion would require evidence that the people who arrive now can commute by bike and transit year around, most bicycles don't work that way, and especially when single parking, side parking is enforced. Otherwise, by substituting the 75 required parking spaces, representing nearly half of the adjacent residential street parking that exists now, with bicycle and transit access assumes that those attracted to CPA will remain sufficiently attracted to take a transit or bicycle when parking pressure becomes a significant deterrent to driving. That may or may not be the case, but in any case, there's no evidence that your proposal will address the impact, the impact of the level of parking pressure that will have on homeowners. In other words, our parking will be gone before these people decide they have to ride a bicycle. They will not be impacted by the parking as early as we will be impacted, so we will be both parking spots before they decide to get on a bus and ride a bicycle. I ask you not to provide CPA with waivers that impact the adjacent homeowners without considering that zoning protects our interests, and until you've provided other means to address and preserve them, let them not be revoked. I respectfully submit this, Jean Ritterson. I do have copies of my testimony, if you'd like me to submit those.
Thank you very much. If you'd like to submit your copy of your testimony, just hand them to the clerk over here. Does anybody else wish to testify? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, presidents and commissioners, my name is Linda Ott. I own a property at 3752 Grand Avenue South, 350 feet away, so I was given a letter of notification a week ago. I also own a property at 3849 Pleasant Avenue South, for which I did not receive a notification, which is just down the block. I lived in the neighborhood for 35 years. I still have those properties as single-family dwellings. The one on 30, so I have several concerns before I get ahead of myself here. I have concerns about parking. I also have concerns about the historic preservation site of Incarnation and how it will be impacted, and why wasn't the Performing Arts Center included on that in 2018. So, in moving forward from, oh, no, I am a Minneapolis public school teacher. So, I am very concerned about the impact that this massive building project is going to have on the community. First of all, with parking, the parking is dense now and is saturated. I am so glad that Ms. Ritterson covered the numbers. My rental property at 3752 Grand, we often have to, for showings, when I'm there, have to park four blocks away. In the wintertime, with single parking, it is always four blocks away. I have two, I have a double garage. It is just dense, and so I am too concerned about the institutions, and I just learned about the new restaurant going in. It was suggested, when I looked online, that they were going to use community partners for the parking. The community partners are already saturated. I lived on that block for, I lived in the neighborhood and on that block for 29 years. So, they're already saturated. They were saturated eight years ago when I moved out, and the Incarnation has gone to five services now, and more events in that church is growing. And we willingly parked blocks away when it was a church event, because that's why we moved there. That's an iconic, that's an iconic structure, that we were delighted to be on the same block as the church. So, there's the parking issue. I'm also, I also am requesting that you do a formal traffic study, that there isn't just word of mouth from the owner. I'm requesting that you do due diligence to our neighborhood, to the livability of that neighborhood, and do a formal traffic study. I'm also concerned about the historic preservation of that iconic structure of Incarnation Church. When I called neighbors last night, because although I received this a week ago, I finally opened it this week, I got on the old crime prevention list and called my neighbors and said, "Do you know about this?", they did not know about it, because they weren't 350 feet away. They were a little further, but yet their lives will be severely impacted by that. So, I think your measure of 350 feet for due diligence should include several blocks because of those massive structures. They knew nothing about this public meeting at all. I'm also requesting that you reopen the question of eligibility on the property as part of the Incarnation Historic District. The Performing Arts Center is a 1923 convent associated with the entire complex of the Incarnation Historic District. A 2005 study did include the convent within the potential district, but it was excluded in 2018 for very unclear reasons. I couldn't get to it online. So, if we're doing your due diligence to the historic preservation of our neighborhood, I would ask that you would reopen that. Change to the site ought to be reviewed by the Preservation Commission to protect the integrity of the overall district, not just that building, the overall district and its iconic value to that neighborhood. Even if the site is not eligible, the Preservation Commission should review the project for its impacted on the listed sites, the historic district. This, of course, would be a reasonable area of potential effect. The concerns, just briefly, changing the viewshed of the area. Right now, the neighborhood's known for the viewshed of that iconic Incarnation Church, and this structure, I'm not sure will be as high, but it's certainly going to loom over everything else. The project would set a precedent for allowing zoning variances for higher and more dense developments. So, you're setting a precedence here in the Kingfield neighborhood, and I know you know that. You changed neighborhoods by your decisions. You changed the livability. Kingfield is a very livable neighborhood. So, I think I'm done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to testify? Please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I'm Merle Thomas Pulli. I live at 3852 Pleasant Avenue, and this permit ought to be denied, and these five variances ought to be denied. First of all, I live less than a block from this proposed expansion, and I was not notified. And the couple, two, three neighbors I talked to today, less than a block away, were not notified. The variance is to increase the height from four stories, 56 feet, to five stories, 55 feet. I have a picture of the building, it looks like three stories to me, I don't know, maybe they count the basement, they don't count the basement in my house. But, the variance is to reduce off-street parking from 75 spaces to one space, with 25 spaces grandfathered for the existing building. Today, there was no parking on that street, I took this this morning. There are six parking spaces behind the current building, and a garage as well. And what I beg you to consider is the bird's eye view of our neighborhood. In the last few years, Incarnation Church, which is kitty-corner from the proposed expansion, has added three new masses, including Saturday masses and Sunday masses. Hyawatha Prep School across the street has expanded their enrollment, and there's buses every morning out in front of our house idling, the diesel buses in the morning. Am I interrupting something? I'm sorry. There's, anyway, the bird's eye view, the Hyawatha Prep is expanded, Lake Country School is expanded, Lake Country School closes their parking lots in the afternoon for the safety of the children, that's how bad the traffic is there. The Grand Cafe is, former Grand Bakery has no parking, the Pizza Cafe, that opening, has no parking, the Tapas Cafe has no parking. And the main thing is that it doesn't make any sense, what they've said for the variances, and the bird's eye view is not at all addressed. And the fact that the residents were not notified is just very poor planning. So, I would ask the Commission to deny this permit and to deny these variances. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify? Commissioner Luthke here.
Yeah, I have a question for the last speaker.
Oh, yes, sorry. Please come back to the microphone, Commissioner has a question for you.
Yeah, hi. So, my question for you is, looking at these land use applications, we have to rule on the items specifically before us, and you listed a lot of very interesting facts, but can you, and other speakers, specifically tie them to the specific applications in front of us? We have one conditional use permit, one site plan review, and six variances. And I'm hearing, and I want you to clarify if I'm misunderstanding, is that your, the variances and the things I'm hearing are perhaps, you have concerns with the CUP in regard to the height? Is that correct?
I'm questioning the math in the variance. It says you can increase the height from four stories, 56 feet, to five stories, 55 feet.
Okay.
That doesn't make much sense.
Yeah, it's because we define height by both number of stories and feet, and sometimes a story exceeds a thing, so it can be a shorter height, but be another story. So, just to clarify, and then also, it sounded to me as though you and some of your neighbors have concerns about variance E, which is in regard to parking, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then in regard to the other variances proposed, though, B, C, D, F, and the site plan G, do you have concerns about those as well?
I do, but I wanted to keep this relevant to how it impacts my dwelling.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that I was understanding that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, if anybody else wishes to testify.
Hello, good evening, President and Commissioners. I am, my name is Dan Ott. I am the son of Linda Ott. I'm also a preservation professional, so I'm just sort of curious about some of the process stuff that happened here. So, I have a question particularly before I get going for Erin. Is the Preservation Commission currently reviewing these projects, or is it sort of been excluded?
What if you, we can have you pose a few questions, provide your testimony, and then we'll answer all questions together.
Okay, so my concern is that essentially, my understanding is that in 2005, this project, this area was studied as well as most of southwest of Minneapolis, and five buildings at Incarnation Church area were identified as a potential historic district within the city of Minneapolis on criteria four, I believe, for architecture. And then in 2018, that's, there was sort of conversation about this, but I have not seen something formally about how this listing occurred. At some point, the north side of the street, the convent at where the Creative Performing Arts Center is, and Lake Country School were somehow excluded from that. And what I heard from that is that the owners were not particularly happy about that, were not very happy about it, and so they asked it to be excluded. And so, I would ask that the entire project area, this building in particular, be included within that district, and that everything involving this project should be heard before the Heritage Commission as well. Because while historic preservation is inconvenient, preservation law is not about convenience. It is about protecting those things which provide us a sense of orientation in the communities which we live. It is about providing a sense of the past and who we are. If we do not protect these things, we may as well be any placeless city in America. If we do not protect our intersections and our key historical developments, they can wash away. And what I'm seeing here is that, yes, this proposal does do something for the architecture of the building, the 1923 building, but it does terrible things to diminish the integrity of the overall setting by putting a hulking mass that is more than double the size of the original building looming over that intersection to say nothing of how the viewshed would be impacted on 38th and Grand, because the building that's right there is just a single story. So, it begin to look more and more built up over time. And so, my concerns about this are process-oriented, to make sure that the adequate, that the resources adequately being accounted for and understood as a historic property, and that within that, the laws of the city of Minneapolis are adhered to and followed so that adequately this project takes those concerns into account. I would further note the irony of an arts center overlooking and brushing by historic preservation, as arts and culture and history go hand in hand as things that provide a sense of meaning to the American people and the people of Minneapolis in particular. And with that, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Erin, if you want to just address quickly whether this is under any kind of review right now.
Thanks. The assurance is no, and that decision in 2018 was made to designate the district that it was. I don't know all the specific details, but I do know that this proposal is not demonstrating to be a demolition. There's a specific definition for what a demolition is, and this is far from that. They're just touching one portion of that wall. And again, they, I know that the applicant has looked to respect the existing building and the area by keeping this as far away as possible from the district and the building, and that adding more art space, as well as making the existing building accessible, are important elements of the project. Thank you.
Is anybody else wishing to testify? Commissioner Luthke here.
I have questions for staff. Erin, so just to clarify, we heard a historic district was proposed, did one get established?
Yes.
Okay, and was this partial in that district?
No.
Okay, and then, just really quick, I don't know if you know this or not, but in going hand in hand with establishing districts, usually we establish guidelines for the district. Do you know of the guidelines for the established district that I assume are then adjacent to this building? Dealt with the exterior building materials of the facilities in the district, or if they were related to other means and facets?
I don't know the specifics of the guidelines for the buildings that are in the district and the materials there.
Thank you, Erin.
Commissioner.
The design guidelines that were adopted for this district do address the three buildings that are included in the district and not the subject building, which was excluded from it.
Commissioner Sweets.
I have a question for either staff member. Can someone go over the notice requirements, too, for the neighborhood and the affected parties, and whether or not they were adhered to in this case?
Sure. I'll, Ms. Alene, add anything that I missed here, but within two weeks of, let me back up, approximately three weeks from the time that a project is coming to you, to the Commission, a notice goes to the Neighborhood Association. And then approximately 10 days to two weeks is when notices are sent out to the neighboring property owners within 350 feet. I know, in addition to that, I know that the applicant, and they explained the outreach that they have done over the last six months for this project, including charrettes, including incorporating, getting feedback from artists in the area, and a number of the emails and conversations I've had with the Neighborhood Association. I've had with the Neighborhood Association and members on the association, including one who's a Heritage Preservation Commissioner, makes me realize that the applicant has done those things that they have mentioned of reaching out to interested parties as much as they could.
Anybody else wishing to testify? We only allowed people to testify one time, sorry. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. We can continue to ask questions or discuss. Commissioners, are there any further questions, any discussion, any motions? We have a number of applications for us. Commissioner Cronzer.
Yeah, I'd like to move staff recommendation for item A, the conditional use permit, with the one stated condition.
We have a motion to approve the conditional use permit, item A. Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Two seconds. Commissioner, look, keep here.
I mean, I'll be supporting this motion just because it's basically a technicality as to why they need a CUP in the first place, because it meets the height by feet, but not by our definition of story. So I don't think it would be allowed at the same exterior mass as it would either way.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Look, keep here?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader? Over to you. Sweetsie?
Aye.
Six zero.
That motion passes. Commissioner Cronzer.
I'd like to make a motion to approve staff recommendation for the four variances, B, C, E, and F.
B, C, E, and F.
Correct.
Motion and a second to approve variances B, C, E, and F.
D or E?
B, C, E, and F. D is a return. We'll take that separately. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Look, keep here?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Six zero.
Commissioner Cronzer.
I'd like to make a motion to return variance D. The variance is to increase the front yard and interior side yard setbacks.
Motion and a second to return variance D. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Look, keep here?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Six zero.
One more application, site plan review.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan review with the nine stated conditions.
A motion to approve site plan review with the nine stated conditions. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, just a couple of comments about the overall project. I do think this is a sensitive addition to a not really officially historic building. It's a very nice old building that's an intersection of a collection of very nice old buildings, including some that are within a historic district. I actually am trying to imagine an addition to an historic building that's better than this because this is a very sensitive addition to this, to this three-story brick building. You know, we all can have our opinions about parking. I think the applicant has done a good job arranging for parking that is nearby, that is off the street, that is available for when this building will be used, and I'm looking forward to coming to events here.
Any further discussion? Now, I would echo Commissioner Cronzer's comments. You know, I think that this is, to me, a kind of development I'd like to see in the city, the kind of development that retains a building that is not designated, that finds a way to allow a neighborhood to evolve. I'm very familiar with this neighborhood. I live in this neighborhood, Hillsbury. I attended Lake Country School, and I went to jazz camp at the Center for Performing Arts, so I know this intersection very well. And I think that this is a great addition, and the evolution of this neighborhood, this intersection over the last decades, I think, has shown how this kind of urban infill, business infill is really a positive in a community. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Look, keep here?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Six zero.
That concludes our official business for the day. Clearly, are there any updates from staff?
No updates. We did not have any items at CNP this last cycle, so no updates there.
All right, no updates. With that, meeting is adjourned.